Hey Scottsdale Living, welcome to our latest podcast. My original podcast was with Solange and I think it's been like five years probably. And I think this is the sixth time we've done this. Super excited. We've got a ton of stuff to talk about with the city of Scottsdale. The city council race, what's going on, a couple of different propositions. So let's hop right into it. So 490 is like everywhere right now, right?
Yes.
I'll kind of paraphrase it like in a layman term, right? So that the citizens, so there's an existing sales tax, point two percent, I believe.
Correct.
And that was in 1995 for 30 years. So it's up next year. Prop 490 is proposing a new sales tax at point one, five.
Correct.
To kind of replace that, but I guess you can't really say replace it, right? It'd be a new tax.
Correct.
Okay, so it, I mean, to me as a citizen, it doesn't really, actually your total overall taxes will go down a little bit. If you approve Prop 490. And it goes to help our parks and the preserve and is that what it is?
Yeah, so really Prop 490 is an extension of what Scottsdale voters have requested. And voted to approve for 50 years.
Wow.
Yeah, Scottsdale voters have always prioritized open space. And so protecting and preserving open space. And as there always is, there are naysayers who try to defeat these campaigns. So anybody who enjoys the green belt, that took three votes to get approved.
Wow.
And can you imagine where Scottsdale would be if we had a concrete channel?
Yeah.
Instead of our Indian Ben Wash green belt.
Sure.
So the McDowellson Oran Preserve. Again, naysayers tried to defeat that tax. And voters would have nothing to do with that. They approved a sales tax twice in 2004 and in 1995. And that sales tax resulted in 30,000 acres of preserve. Can you imagine again what we would be like without that? We would have 30,000 acres of apartments, houses and strip malls.
You know, I read something really crazy Solange and you probably know this better than I, but uh, I think if I remember correctly, Scottsdale has more open space than any other city with like maybe Jacksonville, Florida or something. Was there like one other city or something?
You know, I'm not sure about Jacksonville, but we definitely have the most open space of 33% of Scottsdale is preserved open space.
It's amazing.
And that is what differentiates Scottsdale from virtually every city in the country.
Sure.
So that is our secret sauce. So it's not just about open space. If the preserve were to burn down and we lose our majestic swallows, and this is not theoretical. Then likely the city wouldn't have the ability to recreate it.
Right.
So as we all know, as Benjamin Franklin said, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So for the last 25 years, we have taxed ourselves in order to acquire and preserve the land. So Prop 490 is now the next step, which is to spend a couple of dollars, a couple pennies a day. A couple pennies a day in order to protect these assets. So the, the parks in southernmost part of our city are 50 plus years old. This couple pennies a day adds up to rebuilding the bathrooms, putting it in playgrounds, adding new trees. And most importantly in the preserve will provide necessary funding to mitigate against wildfires. And there are a lot of threats that create the risk of wildfires.
And they happen all the time. I mean, it's going on.
Three this year. So anybody who loves the preserve, anybody who loves the parks and anybody who has a dog who loves the parks.
Sure.
Prop 490 is for you.
Yeah. So the, I hate the opposition that I've heard a couple of different times is, so I mean, the city Scottsdale has what a 2.55 billion dollar budget, right? For 2025?
Yeah. So the budget is deceiving our budget. There's the operating budget. There's a capital expenditure budget. And so let's talk about terms that residents understand.
Sure.
Scottsdale has never been more prosperous than it is today.
Yeah.
And that should not be taken for granted.
Which is amazing concerning like during COVID, everybody's stressed. I know we had to talk about that in COVID. It was like, you know, what's gonna happen?
Right. So I'll tell you what happened. We have a city council and majority. And we have staff that have focused our tax dollars so that they benefit taxpayers. We have some of the lowest taxes, the second and third lowest taxes in the valley. We have the highest property values in the history of the city. We have the highest quality of life. We have the most open space. And needless to say, we have the best brand probably in the nation.
Yeah.
We are the international luxury destination. So the question I often get asked because we have candidates running for changes. Who wants to change that formula? We're also, I should, one, one more important point. We're the 10th safest city in the country.
Love that. Yeah.
And that's what you get when you have good government and good government isn't partisan. It certainly isn't radical. And the things that we do don't fit on a bumper sticker. What we are is community focused and community aligned. And I will say that the opposition cannot win at the ballot box.
Sure.
And that is why we saw lawsuits and that is why we're seeing incredible misinformation campaigns.
Yeah, absolutely. So can you elaborate a little bit on where, like where is this tax? Where do we get it from? I mean, it's a sales tax. So it's like, if you go into the Circle K and buy something, is that, is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
But let me tell you about a sales tax. Let me tell you the policy of this council. And the reason that we now have double the reserves as for instance, when under Mayor Jim Lane's administration. We're very fiscally conservative. My husband calls me the most fiscally conservative in the household. So we're, we're serious about this and the way we do it is using sales taxes and cash. So if you have an electric bill, are you going to take out a mortgage to pay that electric bill? I hope not.
Yeah.
Same with the maintenance and same with the hiring more police officers and firemen. So this sales tax is a pay as you go tax. That everybody will pay a couple pennies a day when they buy something.
And it's not just Scottsdale residents. It's everybody in Scottsdale.
That is the key to our success. So if we levy the property taxes, then only people who own properties will pay. But the city of Scottsdale enjoys 11 million visitors a year.
Right.
Those visitors come because Scottsdale is an exceptional city. And they help pay to keep Scottsdale an exceptional city. And so besides the 11 million visitors, we know that people from all around the valley want to come to Scottsdale. They want to come to Old Town.
For dinner and to eat and the whole thing. Sure.
They're paying the sales tax. And then we're not paying these ridiculous fees to bond, which is proposed by some of my colleagues. Again, bonding is like borrowing money to pay your electric bill. Sales tax is pay as you go. And we, that's, that's the path we're going on. We gotta save taxpayers a ton of money. And all those master planned parks that probably thousands, 5,000 or more residents have provided input on. Prop 490 is the funding.
Yeah.
To make those master plans reality.
Sure.
Keep Scottsdale.
So how do you feel about the proposition? Is it looking positive?
So when I speak with community groups and I'm out and about a lot. It's rare that I can find a single person in a group that says, no, I don't want to pay four bucks a month. To have a more police officers in my parks and parks that are, I know.
Sure.
Are safe and beautiful. One resident told me Scottsdale can't rely on its looks forever. We've got to pay in and when you pay in upfront, you reap the rewards and you save a ton of money. So we have done some polling, which is where you just call random people and see how they feel. 70% of respondents support Prop 490. Of course, this is again, 50 years.
Sure.
Of Scottsdale voter priorities. But the misinformation campaign has caused some residents to email me and say, how can we trust city council? To use the tax dollars in a way that the voters approved. And my response is a question back to them. Name one voter approved initiative where the tax dollars were diverted away.
Sure.
From that which was promised and used for something else. And the answer is never.
Right. So but for that to actually happen, would that have to go through like a city council vote and public forum?
Yeah. So.
So that'd be uprising.
Yeah. We, and first of all, why is there any flexibility? And I'll give you an example. In the bond package of 2000, there was a helicopter for the preserve. That's an expensive purchase and even more expensive maintenance problem. And you have to have a helicopter pilot. We decided we didn't need it. So yes, the voters voted to approve a helicopter. We didn't need it. We didn't buy it. So there's always flexibility.
Sure.
But the ordinance can be changed by, and everything we do is by ordinance. So anything, any service you have, you know, there's probably an ordinance attached to it. A majority, a four person majority on the council is what it takes to change an ordinance. But there's a tremendous public process.
Oh yeah.
And certainly when you, a city council tries to change an ordinance that was a voter approved. You're, you're talking about legal issues. In addition, every process involves public outreach. So the, and, and what we did to add a sense of security is for the first time ever. This ordinance attached to Prop 490 requires a five person vote.
Okay.
But again, this is to allow tweaks because maybe a park, maybe we get a grant to put in a playground. So we don't need that dollars for that playground, but we can go to another park.
Sure.
And put a playground there. So the other thing we did is we had the ordinance written before we approved the Prop 490 to put it on the ballot. So complete transparency.
Sure. So tell me a little bit about the lawsuit. So it was kind of like a last minute kind of lawsuit, right? And you know, and apparently it was about the verbiage of the way it was written.
So it wasn't about the verbiage. That was the argument that the plaintiffs and the Goldwater Institute.
Yeah.
Used, when you can't win at the polls, when you're wrong, try to use the courts.
Sure.
To undermine democracy. So we had a two-year process, 22 public meetings, 1,500 residents provided input, a nine citizen, nine resident task force. Working to create what eventually became Prop 490.
Okay.
Incredibly transparent, community driven process.
Sure.
The plaintiffs were nowhere to be found.
Oh wow.
So then, um, then Mayor Manrus met with Mayor Jim Lane, who was one of the plaintiffs. Right after this ordinance was passed and the 490 was put on the ballot by the city council and said, any questions? And he's, even at that point, he indicated he would probably sue. So the lawsuit came at the tail end of the timeframe in order to run out the clock.
Sure.
The, the goal of the lawsuit was to allow a minority of extreme voters. Who did not want Prop 490 to pass, to take away the democratic right.
Yeah, being voted on, right?
Of every other voter in the city. So the court declined, the court did not support that. And that was true in the appellate court case as well. So the lower court ruling said no on all counts. The appellate court ruling did not approve one word in, in the ballot language. So they didn't oppose this being on the ballot.
Sure.
They didn't oppose democracy. They opposed one word, which cities have the flexibility to change ballot language. As long as they don't change the ballot initiative itself.
Sure.
So this is legal and it's common. And when the council approved this, we gave staff the authority to change the language without coming to us.
Sure.
Because for a variety of reasons, you might have to tweak the language. For added transparency, we brought that to a council meeting.
Oh wow. Okay.
So we changed it in the public process.
Sure.
Instead of saying replace a tax, we simply removed that. So it's a new tax and we don't use the word replace.
Right, right.
But everything else about the initiative stays the same and the courts absolutely disagreed with an attempt. To divert, you take this off the ballot and really undermine democracy in Scottsdale.
And so to clarify for the voters, because sometimes it's confusing, right? If you vote yes on 490, you're voting to implement the tax, which would basically, and of course you're not supposed to say this, but I can, to replace old tax. And it's a little bit lower. If you vote no, you just want the tax to go away.
Yes.
Okay.
So let's think about the preserve tax. When that was voted on, so the preserve costs the city of Scottsdale taxpayers 1.3 billion dollars. And I always ask people, how many people wrote the check for 1.3 billion? Nobody wrote the check for 1.3 billion. That's how taxes work in Scottsdale. We all chip in a couple pennies and we get that which none of us can get on our own. And so, yes, so the 1.3 billion dollar tax or tax dollar collection led to the McDowellson Oran Preserve. And cost taxpayers roughly four and a quarter a month per household. So yes, a yes vote on Prop 490 will again, implement a 30 year sales tax. That costs, the projections are $3.71 per month per household. And it will reinvest in our parks. It'll dedicate a park ranger unit to keep our parks and people safer. It will give us the much needed fire mitigation manpower, equipment and expertise. And.
Which is actually huge. I mean, that's a big part of it because I mean, I see, like I live up north, so I see it all the time, right? I mean, Rio Verde, Cave Creek, Carefree, a lot of fires, you know, it's kind of scary.
And preventing fires.
Sure.
Saves a lot of money.
Yeah.
You don't care about cute critters and hiking in the preserve.
Yep, absolutely. I love it. So that's 490. Let's jump to 491. So this is not a tax.
Correct.
Doesn't increase the cost to any citizen from my understanding.
Correct.
And it increases the basic expenditure for the city by like 22 million bucks.
Yeah. So the way the state law requires caps on spending. So it would be like if you have $2 million in the bank, but big brother tells you, you can only spend $250,000. And you'd be a little peeved because you have more money in the bank. So the state has these imposed state expenditure limits.
Okay.
So most cities change those expenditure limits regularly.
Sure.
The city of Scottsdale for the last administration did not ever change. So we have a 20 year old expenditure limit. The last time it was changed, Mayor Mary Manrus was mayor.
Wow, okay.
Yes.
And same dollar amount that whole time.
Dollar amount. It was, wow. Last time it was changed, Scottsdale did not have a fire department. We didn't have many of the parks. We didn't have a lot of the preserve land.
Sure.
So a lot has changed and so the expenditure limit simply is about local control. Allowing the city to spend the money that it generates, the revenue it generates.
And the funds are already there.
Yeah. And if we pass 490 and we don't pass 491, we don't get to use the proceeds.
Oh wow, okay.
And as one fireman told me, we have new fire stations that are being built. If 491 doesn't pass.
Sure.
We won't have the spending authority to put firemen in that fire station.
That's crazy. Wow. So elaborate a little more on what that money would go to for 491. So that's going to go to fire or just generally across the board for the city?
It just allows the city to spend the, spend the revenue that we generate. I mean, Queen Creek has a higher expenditure limit than the city of Scottsdale.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
That is crazy. So why has it never been up in the last, I mean, just.
A lot of things were done that we opposed during the 2010s and a lot of things weren't done that should have been.
Yeah.
So how did we address it? We can't change the past, but this city council approved a, approved a new procedure. That will force future city councils to review the expenditure limit and send it to the voters.
Modify it. Sure.
Three, five years. Yeah.
Oh, cool. Okay. So they kind of go hand in hand. If you pass 490 without 491, you're not going to be able to use the money.
And if you pass 491 without passing 490.
No money there to use.
We all continue to have to defund services and that's the bottom line. That I want to point out one more thing to the viewers. The state legislature has been defunding city governments. And the city in the last couple or last couple sessions, last two sessions. The state legislature has removed roughly 10 to 15 million dollars of revenue for our city from the flat tax. And another 10 to 15 million dollars.
Sure.
From our revenue by eliminating our rental tax. And the rental tax was not an expense, not a big expense for renters.
Sure.
But it generated revenue that we use in order to hire policemen and in order to, you know, take care of the services everybody expects. And we do so much for our, you know, less fortunate residents too. And those are the residents that get hurt the most when you have the slash and burn type politicians getting into office.
Sure. So let's switch gears a little bit and kind of talk about development. It's always a big, it's always a big thing, right? Apartments development going on in Scottsdale. I mean, to me, I kind of find it amazing a lot of ways because if I remember correctly, like Tempe passes more development projects in a month than we do in a year, right? So it's, it's crazy. Yeah, right? It does. It does.
But Tempe is not Scottsdale.
No, a hundred percent.
Yeah. So that is, development is one of the areas I'm most proud about. Because when you slash revenue like Prop 490, you have elected officials who rely on one-time developer fees to pay the bills.
Sure.
And so that is why into the 2010s, we saw an unprecedented amount of apartments getting approved. And we saw heights that never were supposed to be allowed in Scottsdale also getting approved. So we at this current city council majority, we have reversed that. What we've done is we have not allowed apartments that are adjacent or impacting residential neighborhoods. But instead we have placed apartment developments on major thoroughfares and near employment. And in places that don't impact the neighborhoods.
Sure.
And we have reduced significantly reduced heights. We have eliminated incentives to do higher, taller, higher density developments. We've removed those incentives. And I'm really proud that we reversed the 2018 decision to allow 150 foot buildings.
Yeah.
In downtown Scottsdale. And I'll give Mayor Ortega a big plug for making that happen.
Sure. Yeah. Which is actually a really great thing. So there's a ton of development going on in the 101 Scottsdale corridor, right? Which actually I think is great. It seems like a really good location for it. What's going on with the park development? Is that moving forward or?
Yeah, that is moving forward. So yes, the 101 corridor from, you know, Scottsdale Road all the way down to Pima. The state trust, the state land department sold thousands of acres.
Sure.
And much of the, most of those acres already had zoning on them. And the city council cannot reverse zoning, but yes, indeed it is a good place for development. I voted against some like the Optima, but I voted for the park. The park development really fits a lot of what we're trying to do. It adds affordable housing. It keeps the heights very far from the road.
Right.
Preserves the vistas.
And it's got the tech aspect to it too, which is really cool. I mean, especially with like the semiconductor plants coming in and everything else.
Yes, and it has a two acre public park.
Yeah, the Central Park right in the middle. It looks really cool.
So those are the, and it's, you know, we passed, we've redone all the building codes at the city. And the new building codes will reduce water usage. So it's not that someone who's living in a condominium will have less water. They just will naturally use less water. And so we'll have more.
Nice segue, right? Let's talk about water. What's going on with our water situation?
Well, I want to point out that water costs are going up. So for those people who want to come up with all kinds of reasons why that's not the issue. The issue is that the Colorado River does not have the water allocations that we are used to using. So we're seeing large cuts in water deliveries. And not only that, we're seeing an increase in the cost of the, every drop we get. Significant and significant cost increases in delivery. So.
So inflation.
No, it's not really inflation.
Okay.
It's, it's that energy and water are both in short supply.
Sure.
And we need to conserve both in order to conserve our pocketbooks, our wallets. And that's again, why we did the building codes. The new building codes reduce your energy usage, save you money.
Sure.
Reduce your water usage, saves you money. So we need to adopt perfectly available technologies that simply use less water and less energy. If we want to reduce costs.
And we have been doing that for a number of years, right? Yeah.
And so, and I also want to point out that when water costs went up. This is where cities versus perhaps a corporation.
Sure.
We think about who is this impacting and how can we help them? So tier one and tier two water users are the users who use the least amount of water.
Okay. And is that residential households or how's that work?
Yeah. And so even a residential household that has a golf course, you're still a certain level of your water, still tier one. So what we've done is even though costs have gone way up, we have maintained that the charges for those tier one, tier two.
Sure.
Water allotments. So we want people to be able to afford the water they need. And then if you want that golf course in your backyard, just be willing to pay for it.
Yeah, absolutely. And so what's kind of funny to me, and we're going to go a little off topic, but you're a really green proponent, which I love. I think that's fantastic. So why, why do we not implement so much more solar? Is there a reason that that's not way more prevalent in the city?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Of course I've had solar on my house since 2009. And you know, I like saving a thousand dollars a year. I mean.
At least, right? I mean.
It's wonderful.
Summer bills are crazy.
So one of the things we did, or I did when I was elected in 2018 is we started implementing solar projects at the city. And we just finished up a one megawatt installment that will, you know, generate 50% of the energy we need at our North Corp yard.
Well.
Why are we doing that? Because Scottsdale's electric bill is about $25 million a year. So if you want to be a fiscal conservative, you might want to lower your power bill.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that is one of the many things that we're doing. We don't have any say in solar policy. Or rooftop, which really rooftop solar policy, that's the corporation commission. And they've been on a tear trying to undermine it. So that's a good question to ask those folks.
Sure. Sure. Oh, that's crazy.
Yeah, it's your roof, your freedom.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you just go to other countries around the world, right? And there's, there's solar everywhere. I mean, Germany's a great example. There's, and it's, it's dark.
Israel, Israel's another good one.
Yeah.
And Scottsdale, I mean, Arizona should be the Saudi Arabia of solar energy. Creates a tremendous amount of local jobs.
Right.
So I hope we get there.
Yeah, I do too as well. So let's flip over a little bit. So there's been, you know, obviously in Scottsdale living, we see like input from the, the community a ton. You know, some homelessness and a little bit of vagrancy going on a little. It, it seems like maybe it's calmed down or not, it shouldn't say calmed down, but backed off a little bit from what it was a year or two ago. But still there, you know, on the street corners, on the highways. What's the city kind of doing about that? What's the approach?
So that's great. And you know, it's an opportunity for me to complain about politicians. Yeah. So the city of Scottsdale, our homeless counts are, you know, 50 and under.
Yeah.
I will say just really quickly that the people who are panhandling near freeways.
Sure.
We don't have the authority to say anything to the, we don't have the authority to, yeah, govern those people. And panhandling is legal and panhandling and homelessness aren't necessarily go hand in hand. But as far as homeless people, we do do the annual count. And our social service staff is always out and about connecting with and communicating with people that we feel are on the verge of being homeless.
Sure.
Or are actually homeless. And so we implemented a program in 2021. That we helped a local hotel with their bills.
Yeah, yeah.
And we housed homeless people that met very strict criteria. And we provided wraparound services.
And wraparound meaning a path.
Yeah, like here's some coaching for getting a job. Here's an interview. Here is a job.
Right.
You know, we had people making bricks for the city of Scottsdale, which was cool. And we had, you know, six, 70 to 80% success rate transitioning those people out of homelessness.
Seems like a really good number, actually.
It's amazing. So we have continued that program and we just this past month approved another year. Unfortunately, legislators and some people at the county have been trying to politicize this. Have tried to weaponize something that is keeping our, our senior citizens from falling into homelessness and families. Trying to undermine support for the program. And they've successfully undermined funding.
Oh wow.
So.
So is that program no longer in existence?
So we have, it's cut in half. We have the hotel program continuing for another year. But we had plans to put a second story on one of our campuses, which is our social service campus. In order to provide low income housing. We received, we were approved for a Maricopa County grant.
Okay.
To help alleviate the burden on our taxpayers. And that was politicized at the legislative lever, at, at the legislative level and at the Maricopa County level. And it's not that the grant was denied because we were already approved. And it's not that the grant was denied because we were already approved. They simply refused to vote to give Scottsdale the money.
Wow.
So we cannot afford to have politicians weaponizing programs
Sure.
that absolutely help Scottsdale residents. And not only do they help Scottsdale residents facing homelessness, we know that when we prevent a person from becoming homeless, we're saving taxpayer money.
Sure, sure. And so that's a really good kind of segue into, I I feel like the city council, Scottsdale mayor, everything has been really a bipartisan group for a long, long time. And on the national level, obviously, it's mayhem, right? But it feels like this this city council race, this mayoral race has been a little more partisan than historically, right? Yeah, I mean, let's go with a lot for sure, right?
Yeah, I have a message for the voters. Don't vote on partisanship.
Yeah, right? So I mean, how, is there a way? And again, this is just a crazy philosophical question, but is there a way to kind of rein that back in? Because it the city level is a whole different thing than the national level, right? And I mean, our city today is amazing. It's a fantastic place to live. It's doing great. People love to come here. So I I feel like it almost creates a a diverge in the city and the residents for no reason.
So the only reason to run on a partisan basis is if you have nothing else to offer their citizens. No other reason for voters to choose you.
Sure.
And I think voters, it's up to voters to say, I do not want to support someone who is promoting extreme partisanship. Extremism is, in my opinion, the opposite prosperity.
Sure.
And voters need to say, who funds this candidate? Because if you have a candidate that is promoting himself as resident-friendly, but his funding comes from out of state
Sure.
or comes from the development community or comes from or his support comes from the short-term rental industry lobbyists, that candidate may not represent the voters.
Sure.
And so I encourage voters who are overwhelmed to really focus on what made Scottsdale successful. This city council is majority Republican. So to suggest that it has been taken over by the liberals, I and what that means, I do not know. You know, I cannot stress enough, the city of Scottsdale today has never been more prosperous. We have the some of the lowest taxes, highest quality of life, property values have never been higher. And we are the 10th safest city in the nation. Who would want change?
Sure, sure. Yeah, it's running pretty good for without a doubt. So what other topics are on the top of your mind? What else are you looking at in the city right now?
So well, definitely Prop 490 and 491 are my priorities
Of course.
because it's so important. But we also have a sustainability plan and the word sustainable has been weaponized too.
Sure.
But everybody I know, when they turn on that faucet, they want water coming out. They don't like 115-plus uh degree temperatures. And they want more trees.
Sure.
And they want lower utility bills. So the sustainability plan, like everything Scottsdale does, is about ideas. It's about incentives. It's about a better quality of life. We don't tend to over-regulate. In fact, we never do.
Sure.
We always incentivize. So what we've seen this past year is record number of lawns being taken out because the city of Scottsdale incentivized that. So uh that, so this sustainability plan is coming up. And um we're just looking forward to continued uh expanding
Sure.
different services. We, you know, our, we raised our pay for firemen, for
Absolutely.
police.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to deliver the great services and have
Love that.
the best staff of any city in
So I'm going to throw one more little curveball at you, right? So let's talk about the airport a little bit. So I think we're quickly outgrowing our airport. I mean, is that is what, is there something in place for that or is there thoughts on that?
So we have the busiest uh
Yeah, single country airport.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely. And so far, I think, you know, our management, again, this notion of firing all the staff that some of the candidates are saying, beware. We have exceptional staff. One thing that we lost in the airport uh was, I guess, parking. I'm not sure I'm using the right terminology, but people, residents were not, were no longer able to park their private airplanes at our airport. And actually, the developer of the park uh is planning to open up some um airport parking spaces.
Okay, so like some hangars or whatever.
Hangars. Thank you. I'm trying to remember. I'm not an airplane person
Yeah, totally.
for private use.
Sure.
So I think we're going to see an expansion of that. And, you know, I I also just want to brag that again, some of my colleagues vote against every federal dollar for some political reason. We received an $11 million grant and redid our runway.
I know. I remember. That was great. That wasn't too, what was that, six months ago, a year ago?
And I'm talking about federal grants. These are our tax dollars.
Yes.
So when we vote against our tax dollars,
Yep.
then our tax dollars go to Tempe or Phoenix or Guindale or somewhere else.
Crazy. Well, it is always fantastic to have you. Super, super appreciate it. So for you, vote yes, 490, 491. Um, anything else on the top of your mind you want to share?
I just want to say, if you love your parks, if you love your preserve, if you like to have police and fire people, please vote yes on 490 and 491.
Wonderful. There you go, guys. Slunge Whitehead, uh, that's number six time I think we've done this. Thank you as always for being here. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Okay.